I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act being Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 laws of the State of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meetings of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kenilworth for the year 2023 and had posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source and the Star Ledger and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notices of requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Poserno?
Here.
Mr. David?
Here.
Mr. DeMondo?
Here.
Mr. Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Ladadi?
Here.
Mr. Skedary?
Here. Can we have a motion for the approval of the minutes of March 23rd? Moved by Mr. Clemente, seconded by Mr. Ladadi. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any communications?
No, Chairman.
Okay. Is my letters part of a communication or is that a letter that we talk about later?
I didn't get them and neither did anybody else.
Okay, so...
I want to speak about them.
All I will say for now is that I received...
I was gonna ask, say, Mr. Chairman, maybe you could ask Mr. Rego, when something comes by email or is hand-delivered to the Chairman, is that considered official correspondence?
No, no, it's not. If it's just the Chairman, no. I think you could acknowledge that later you'll be speaking about it, maybe even do it that way.
Okay, so it's not formal communications as we know it because of the way it was delivered, but I will be speaking about this in the public session, not in the public session of the application, but in the public session later on. Okay? Next is, there's no resolutions, correct?
No.
Seeing none. We're gonna get right to the application 622-347-351 Monroe. Kathy, we're good on publication notice?
Hi. Good evening, Chairman and board members. My name is Heather Rollstein from Jabazan, Florida, and I'm here to represent 351 Monroe Avenue LLC in connection with the application of 351 Monroe Avenue. The applicant is proposing to add a 5,568 square foot building and demolish the smaller 1,200 square foot building on Monroe Avenue to provide for increased storage for materials and equipment in connection with the applicant's contract against this KBD contract. The applicant will be proposing a new sidewalk along Monroe, landscaping in front of the building, a lot will be paved along with other areas which you'll hear about through...
Excuse me, Heather? May I call you Heather?
Yes.
The people in the back saying they can't hear you too well. If you could just kinda speak up a little bit?
Oh, sure.
All right. You can hear the noise on the mic.
Yeah, it's on. Okay, so can you pull it closer to you?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Sorry to interrupt you.
The experts, the architect and the engineer will testify about the improvements that are gonna be made to the site in terms of cleaning up the site, landscaping, lighting, and reduce runoff of stormwater. There's only one variance, one C variance in connection with this application, and it's for maximum lot coverage. The applicant is, the maximum lot coverage is 80%, and the applicant is proposing 92.24%, which is actually a decrease from the 98% currently is there now because the applicant's proposing landscape. There's also just one existing nonconformity, which is 9.9 feet, yeah, North 12th Street is 9.57 feet from minimum, from minimum front back and instead of 10 feet. So there's a small setback.
So you said 9.7, and it's supposed to be 10?
10, yeah.
Okay.
Small setback, small setback from Monroe. At this point, I would like to call the applicant's engineer, Ed Dec, of, what am I saying? Borello and Dec Associates LLC. Can you please provide the board with your education and area of expertise?
Heather, mark two four. Let me swear him in first.
Oh, yes, aye.
Ed, could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Edward, little initial S, last name Dec, DBC.
Now, Mr. Dec has appeared before this board many times as an engineer?
Yes.
Is that why we're being called tonight?
Engineer license are there.
Our licenses still in effect?
Yes, they are.
It's up to the board if you can accept them or...
Well, we accept this, Ed.
Make it easier.
That's great.
Excuse me, one second, Heather. Why don't I swear in our planner?
Yep.
And our engineer?
Let's do that.
Mr. O'Brien and Christian, with regard to this application, will any of all of your comments and testimony, even the truth, set up?
I do.
Thank you. All right. Ed, you're being called as an engineer and a surveyor.
That's correct.
Thank you. Have you been called that before, Ed?
Yes, I have. Mr. Dec, can you please describe the layout of the plan?
Sure, I'll go to the easel where we have the plans. Those plans are the same plans that are in front of the board.
If there's nothing new in those plans, Ed?
No, there isn't.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Heather. No, no, we won't need to mark. If you show us anything that we don't have, we'll have to mark that, but so long as we have it, then we're to discuss.
Do you need to mark that as if it's part of the...
No, no, we already have it. If we already have it, Heather, anything new would be exhibit one, exhibit A, or something like that.
Here at the easel, I have the set plans entitled, preliminary final site plan for 347-351 Monroe Avenue, consisting of three lots, lots one, two, and three, and block 55. It has frontage on both Monroe and North 12th Street. On sheet one, what we have are the 200-foot radius maps, a key map, zoning map, list of the property owners within 200 feet, and notes that pertain to the plan itself. We also have the zoning chart here. On sheet two is the existing conditions plan, and as you can see from the plan, the entire site is either building or a asphalt-stone compacted surface. There's no grass on the entire piece of property. What the intention of the applicant is, is to knock down the building on, just on the southern side of Monroe Avenue. It's an existing masonry building. Retain the two masonry buildings that front on 12th, and we will be constructing the new building along Monroe. There are two driveway access points on Monroe. There is one, or two actually, on North 12th, one for this large open area and another that can have access to that rear side building. On sheet three, that's entitled our proposed site plan, we also have landscaping and lighting there. On the left-hand side of the plan, you can see how the improvements are done in relationship to the property. We're proposing to put the one-story masonry building, square footage of approximately 5,500 square feet, and fronting along Monroe, the corner or the side of the building to be along North 12th Street. We are proposing landscape buffering along Monroe and 12th in front of the proposed building. We are going to redo the surface of the parking area with new pavement, and we are also proposing to have underground detention, which addresses, although the premium posts of the site are almost the same, we are collecting the water runoff from both, or all three of these buildings, putting them in a recharge type of system, and we have overflow, overflows that go to the existing system out on Monroe. We are proposing writing off of the wall-mounted lights off the proposed building and also off of the existing building, and we have numerous details here. The last sheet is just a solar origin subcontrol plan, and if you'd like, I could go through the professional, board professionals' letters and kinda highlight what was written in those. I'll address harbor consultants first. It's dated April 6, 2023. There was a few comments that I would like to address that were pointed out by the board engineer. One was the calculations for the stormwater retention that we're proposing. They weren't shown on the plan here.
Ed, excuse me, if you're referencing harbor engineering and the report, can you tell us what you're reading from, what number that you're reading from?
Sure.
This is the April 6 letter?
April 6 letter, yeah. Are you with the site plan, grading and utilities, are you in landscaping, lighting?
Okay, let me start with the site plan, I'm gonna do it off the top, I'll follow the guide of the letter.
This way it'd be easier for the board members to follow it.
Certainly. Page two, under site plan, number, well, one is a statement of fact, two, I will have the architect address how the ingress, ingress to these proposed buildings will be, as far as the site goes, the entranceways are either off of Monroe or off of North 12th. Circulation will be internal and pretty much going back out on North 12th. There may be some traffic on Monroe, but the main portion of the traffic will be directed, as it is now, onto North 12th at the existing curb ending. The applicant, number three, is depressing...
Mr. Dec, could you go into detail about the types of vehicles or that will have the applicant?
Sure, well, I could tell you, but I think the applicant probably, he has all his construction equipment, he'd be able to describe them a little bit better than me, but they're nothing of like a tractor-trail type size. They're only single-runder type of vehicles.
And number two, Mr. Dec, you're gonna address the hours of operation and the use, uses?
Oh, the hours of operation and the use of the overall site. The hours of operation, I think, could be best described and testified by the applicant. The uses will be just construction equipment and related vehicles to work construction purposes. As far as the storage, I might be jumping ahead a little bit, but as far as storage goes, the site, all the storage that is now outside of the building will be put inside the new building, and that is the purpose of that building, is to store the construction equipment and construction supplies and, you know, keep it out of the weather.
So, Mr. Dec, the applicant or his testimony or her testimony will provide us with more information in line items two and three?
I would say the best person to address that would be the applicant, that's correct. The, number four, the ADA sidewalk, we do show on the plan, and that would be cut down according to ADA standards at the corner. Eleven spaces are proposed, as noted, and one space will be inside the building, whereas probably, there would probably be more than adequate space for other vehicles inside that building, but we are meeting the minimum requirement. The outdoor storage, again, I think that would be best addressed by the applicant?
Ed, sorry. Who, the applicant will be utilizing that inside space, that would be for employee, for one of the employees?
I don't know how the park, there are no, obviously, I'm just gonna say, obviously, to best of my knowledge, there are no retail or customer-type parking needed for the site, so it would either be construction equipment or employee parking.
And to clarify, this is the same use that's been at the site?
That's correct, yeah. This use isn't changing whatsoever. It's really to improve the site and the working conditions for the applicant.
And just to be clear, Mr. Dec, as a parking space, you're not gonna park permanent construction equipment there, this is for employee and visitor?
That is correct. These are for car stalls type of use. That's correct. The, that was number, I guess, number six, which then the applicant can address. The fencing along North 12th and Monroe, which refer back to sheet two, we show fencing along North 12th up to the northerly side of the existing building, and also along Monroe to that westley side, as that is just actually, past that goes only to the property corner. Because of the new building and of the landscaping, we are proposing to eliminate the fence along the property line along Monroe and also the fence along the property line on North 12th. There will be a gate that's going to attach from the building to the existing fence that runs along the vacated railroad property, and also another gate at the southerly end of the existing building to that same railroad property fence. And that would be, that's an existing fence here, which is a chain-link fence, and that would also be a chain-link fence at Monroe. On note number eight, we will add a note that would specify that any area that's in disrepair, including curb and sidewalk, driveway, pavement, et cetera, will be improved, be improved as required by the Borough and by the board engineer.
Mr. Dec, who would make that decision, the Borough?
The board engineer would make that decision, that's correct.
The story in the site inspection?
Okay. So, what Mr. Dec is saying, that if you X out curbs and sidewalks and things like that, whatever you're asking them to replace or redo, you're saying yes to that?
That's correct, yep.
Okay.
The, also, what I'd like to point out is the sidewalk along, although this is not part of that first group of comments, the sidewalk along Monroe Avenue is going to be replaced and constructed. The sidewalk that exists along North 12th will remain as is. The, we are reducing the total amount, this is now green facilities, number one, we are reducing the total amount of impervious coverage by eliminating the pavement that was along Monroe Avenue and also some of the pavement that was along North 12th, so there is a reduction of approximately 2,000 or maybe 1,500 square feet of impervious coverage.
So, Mr. Dec, in the report, it says there's 98% now. Is that what that means? And then you are going to make it less than 98%?
That is correct, we're making it approximately 92%.
Okay. Thank you.
Number two, the grading and utilities, we are proposing underground retention, detention systems. There'll be one between the new building and the existing masonry building, and another to southerly side of the site alongside the existing building there. And what the intent of that is, is although we are reducing the impervious coverage, what we'd like to do is also reduce the amount of runoff coming off the site. So what we've done is designed these two retention areas to collect all of the roof runoff for a three-inch storm, and that would have complete total capacity for the entire three inches of roof runoff. And then at a certain point, once recharge or the intensity increases, we have overflows and a pipe that's connected to the existing system on Monroe.
Mr. Dec, you provided calculations after by law, correct?
That is correct.
I'll mark this as exhibit one.
So you have a document of new calculations?
Yes.
That's correct. Okay. Why don't I mark it A1?
A1.
Mr. Dec, did you prepare?
Yes, I did, yes.
Okay. How many copies do you have?
I have one for everybody.
Oh, okay.
Some members have got their...
Are these our drainage calculations?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
What that really...
Thank you.
What that does is just explains how we got the determinant of size of the detention areas based on the roof runoff of three inches.
Mr. Dec, I'm seeing this now for the first time tonight. Did the engineer have a chance to see this before?
About five minutes before the meeting.
That's nice.
Yes.
Thank you. In your five-minute span before the meeting, did you take a look at this, Chris?
Yes, I, I mean, I could do all the calculations, but they look, they look...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dec.
Thank you.
And there's nothing there now, there's no detention there now, so this is better along than what's there now in, obviously, for landscaping.
The board members wish to have Mr. Quado review this in more timely fashion and report back to the board as part of the resolution, Chairman.
Yeah. We're gonna recommend that, you know, given the fact that there was nothing there in the first place. I mean, we could all see that, but anyway. Mr. Dec, continue, please.
Those two statements with facts are, or number three, actually, is requested by the board engineer that we connect both systems and have them going into that existing system. Right now, we just have this one of the northerly section of the property. We can connect it from the other system, make them tandem and direct them down towards the street, so we'll be able to abide by that request. The grading, yes, as stated, it's all directed to collect, be collected by two-yard drains as part of the detention system between the new building and existing, and also two-yard drains here in the southerly corner. So everything's grading towards and flowing towards the existing system. Nothing's going offsite. Again, number five is the drainage calculations. Operation and maintenance value, I would ask to come part of the conditions of approval when we provide that. The center sewer flow, there's no change in the number of employees at the site. There will be no increase above the contributory flow of sewer flow into the system. I did a quick analysis of the flow that we generated based on the square footage of the, of the proposed and existing uses, and they will remain the same at approximately 1,300, 1,400 gallons per day.
You'd like the final?
We are proposing, as is stated here, to use all of the existing utilities that are presently available to the site coming in off both Monroe and North 12th, and those connections will be made, and if there are any issues with the existing systems, we would have to make that improvement, and that would be something, I guess, the board engineer will reveal during construction.
Have you taken a look at that, Chris? The existing conditions with the utilities? Is there gonna be any impact on the addition that they're putting in at the, at present time?
That was what, that was what my comment was, like, to explain, is there, is there gonna be a big need, he's saying there's not going to be?
There's not, yeah, there's not gonna be a change.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay, and then landscaping, lighting, we are proposing landscaping, as stated earlier, along Monroe and 12th, and we are proposing writing that's shown on that sketch on the right-hand side of sheet three, wall-mounted, and there was a recommendation by the board engineer, which we will be placing additional lighting on the wall on that proposed building.
And can you also warranty the landscaping for two years?
We can make a note of that. And that seems to be those comments in that, in the board engineer's review letter, and I guess I can go now to the planner's review letter. And all the following will be outlined in the letter?
I think it would be easier, Mr. Dec, if there's things that are given, we could, you know, we could move around a little bit, but just so it's clear.
Looking at the board planner's letter dated April 7, 2023, and the first page has a project description, which is exactly correct, is what we are presenting here tonight. Page two, I'll start with planning comments, section two. Lighting is proposed, and what types of writing, what types of landscaping. The landscaping are arborvities, we're proposing approximately 20, I'm sorry, 17, five foot to six foot high, bad and bold, the dark American arborvities, and those will be along the front and the side.
So, I have a question. So, the planner asked the question, landscaping is proposed in front of the proposed building, what type, what plantings are proposed? Are they already on that plan?
Yes.
And we already saw that?
Well, it's over there.
Yes. It's marked 17.
Type and height were not specified.
Okay, type and height, but the plants were there, but type and height?
The plants are there, correct.
Yes.
You don't have type and height, I mean?
Yeah, I do. I have five to eight, five to six foot high, and there'll be two-door Occidental arborvitie.
So I didn't see that plan being scheduled, and I was wondering if there was something I missed, Kevin, that, why you asked the question?
Because I missed it, I'm still looking for it.
It's right on, it's on the far right.
Top right corner of page three, I think it is.
That's correct.
Oh, wow, that is, that is so big and so full. My, my, I missed that, Mr. Chairman. My deepest apologies. My follow-up question is, how far apart on center?
I usually, I don't have it here, but I usually place it at 10 foot on center.
So then the question goes to the second part of irrigation, which he asks.
The irrigation of the landscaping, is the question?
Yes.
I have not proposed any arbor landscaping or irrigation at all.
So, how do they live?
They're fairly hardy type of plants, so long, I see them in quite a number of different locations, and I think they're doing fine without irrigation.
The satellite side of the site alongside the existing building there. And what the intent of that is, is although we are reducing the average coverage, what we'd like to do is also reduce the amount of runoff coming off the site. So what we've done is designed these two retention areas to collect all of the roof runoff for a three-inch storm. And that would have complete total capacity for an entire three inches of roof runoff. And then at a certain point, once recharge or the intensity increases, we have overflows and a pipe that's connected to the existing system on Monroe.
Mr. Deck, you provided calculations that were by law, correct?
That is correct.
I'll mark this as, is it your line?
So you have a document of new calculations?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me mark it A1.
A1.
Mr. Deck, did you prepare?
Yes, I did.
Okay. How many copies do you have?
I have one for everybody.
Oh, okay.
Some members still got their.
Are these their drainage calculations?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
What that really...
Thank you.
What that does is just explains how we got to determine the size of the detention areas based on the roof runoff of three inches.
Mr. Deck, I'm seeing this now for the first time tonight. Did the engineer have a chance to see this?
About five minutes before the meeting.
That's nice. Jesus.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good test.
The, in your five-minute span before the meeting, did you take a look at this, Chris?
Yes, I, I mean, I could do all the calculations, but they look, they look...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Deck.
Thank you.
And there's nothing there now. There's no tension there now, so this is better along than what's there now in obviously landscaping.
The board may wish to have Mr. Quaid review this in more timely fashion and report back to the board as part of the resolution.
We're going to recommend that, you know, given the fact that there was nothing there in the first place. I mean, we can all see that, but anyway. Mr. Deck, continue, please.
Those two statements with facts are number three, actually. It was requested by the board engineer that we connect both systems and have them going into that existing system. Right now, we just have this one of the normal section of the property. We can connect it from the other system, make them tandem and direct them down towards the street. So we will be able to abide by that request. The drainage, yes, as stated, it's directed to collect, be collected by two-yard drains as part of the detention system between the new building and existing, and also two-yard drains here in the satellite corner. So everything's grating towards and flowing towards the existing system. Nothing's going offsite. Again, number five is the drainage calculations. Operation and maintenance value, I would ask, come part of the conditions of approval. We provide that. The center sewer flow, there's no change in the number of employees at the site. There will be no increase above the contributory flow of sewer flow into the system. I did a quick analysis of the flow that we generated based on the square footage of the, of the proposed and existing uses, and they will remain the same at approximately thirteen, fourteen hundred gallons per day. We are proposing, as is stated here, to use all of the existing utilities that are presently available to the site coming in off both Monroe and North 12th, and those connections will be made. And if there are any issues with the existing systems, we would have to make that improvement. And that would be something, I guess, the board engineer will reveal during construction.
Have you taken a look at that, Chris? The existing conditions with the utilities? Is there going to be any impact on the addition that they're putting in at the, at present time?
That was what, that was what my comment was, like, to explain, is there, is there going to be a big need, he's saying there's not going to be?
Yeah, there's not going to be a change.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay, and then landscaping lighting. We are proposing landscaping, as stated earlier, among Monroe and 12th, and we are proposing lighting, as shown on that sketch on the right-hand side of sheet three, wall mounted, and there was a recommendation by the board engineer, which we will be placing additional lighting on the wall on that proposed building.
And can you also warranty the landscaping for two years?
We can make a note of that. And that seems to be those comments in that, in the board engineer's review letter. And I guess I can go now to the planner's review letter. Can I follow the outline of the letter?
I think it would be easier, Mr. Deck. If there's things that are given, we could, you know, we could move around a little bit, but just so it's clear.
All right. Looking at the board planner's letter dated April 7, 2023, and the first page has a project description, which is exactly correct, is what we are presenting here tonight. Page two, I'll start with plan and comments, section two. Lighting is proposed, and what types of writing, what types of landscaping. The landscaping are arborvitae's. We're proposing approximately twenty, I'm sorry, seventeen, five foot to six foot high, bad wood, the dark American arborvitae's, and those will be along the front and the side.
So I have a question. So the, the planner asked the question, landscaping is proposed in front of the proposed building, what type, what plantings are proposed? Are they already on that plan?
Yes.
And we already saw that?
Well, it's over there.
Yes.
It's marked. Type and height were not specified.
Okay, type and height, but the plants were there, but type and height?
The plants are there.
Yes.
You don't have type and height, I mean?
Yeah, I do. I have five to eight, five to six foot high, and there are the two-door occidental arborvitae.
So I didn't see that planning schedule, and I was wondering if there was something I missed, Kevin, while you asked the question.
Because I missed, and I'm still looking for it.
It's way on, on the far right.
Top right corner of page three, I think it is.
That's correct.
Oh, wow, that is, that is so big and so full. My deepest apologies. My follow-up question is, how far apart on center?
I usually, I don't have it here, but I usually place it at ten foot on center.
So then the question goes to the second part of irrigation, which he asks.
The irrigation of the landscaping, is the question?
Yes.
I have not proposed any on landscaping irrigation at all.
So how do they live?
They're fairly hardy type of plants, so long, I see them quite a number of different I think they're doing fine without irrigation, although...
It's usually needed at planting for some time afterwards.
Well, I, I think...
They have to do a two-year warranty. They have to take care of it anyways.
It could be a condition.
Comment, Mr. Deck.
Thank you. Item number two, I will defer that to the architect. Three, I can answer that no, but I will let the architect also address that. The, number four, stating the fact that there is new sidewalk now proposed along Monroe Avenue between our property and the curb. And number five, there is no new sidewalk that we're proposing on North 12th. And cars are generally parked, I'll just paraphrase what's written here for item number six, cars are generally parked in front of the building on North 12th. With the addition of the parking, then we pay more, where cars continue to park on North 12th. Yes, they will continue to be parking there.
And can I ask you a question? And I didn't see it on the plan, or I'm just putting it out there. Where the new sidewalk meets North 12th, and specifically two on the other side, would that impact the crosswalk at all? And would we need to look at addressing a crosswalk where pedestrians would come across with drop curb in the crosswalk there?
Well, we will be providing that drop curb, and we are the ADA standards in both directions, both crossing North 12th and crossing Monroe. I don't know if there's an existing painted crosswalk across Monroe.
Based on Google Maps, it doesn't give that there are any crosswalks at that intersection.
Okay.
And just a comment to the board, the, the parking along North 12th is currently in the borough right of way.
Okay. On page three, continuing with section two, the existing storage that's located outside of the building, it will be stored inside. And again, maybe something that the board would like to address the applicant about that.
Okay.
And number eight, I'm not really sure what that pipe is. I don't even know if we located that when we did the survey. I'll certainly take a look at that, and if it is some sort of drainage pipe, we'll address that and connect that to our proposed system. We'll find out what kind of outlet pipe that is, and if there's something wrong with it, we'll correct it.
May I show it, Mr. Deck?
Without the cane.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That looks like a roof. Yeah, that is, looks to me like it's a pipe that's connected to the roof, like a roof loader or gutter. And we will connect that internally into the system because we're proposing a runoff along the front.
Okay, good.
Thank God for technology.
Going on to part three of the planner's report, the proposed conditions is, that's correct. The lot, we're allowed eight percent, we're proposing ninety-two, although we are reducing it somewhat, but still the need of a maximum lot coverage varies, a C-type varies. Then I could go into the proofs, if that's, unless the board might have some other questions as far as the design of the plans at this point.
At this point, I don't know. Does the board want to hold off on questions for Mr. Deck? It may be answered with Mr. Grimaldi, and we could work that way and come back with a debate. What are you thinking?
That's fine.
Mr. Deck, vice chair?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Getting on to the planner's review letter, the, as stated in item number five, this, this site does create a much better environment for this whole area. It's going to clean up the site, it's building with, I've seen the architetches with grain, the site will be cleaned up, the sidewalk in the front will lead to the safety of pedestrian traffic. So I believe that it meets the commercial goals of the master plan, also the industrial goals, as stated in number five. The required proofs, which would be...
Mr. Deck, you're testifying as a planner?
Well, I'm not testifying as a planner, no, but I am trying to address the issues.
Just trying to defend the planner's full point.
Very good.
All right, if that's fine with the board, I mean, I'm not...
You want to testify, and then we'll give it the weight, which it requires.
Thank you very much. The bullet variance is, it's more like a, I would say, like a flexible C, because the benefits of granting this variance substantially outweigh the detriment. It's going to make this whole area, improve this whole area considerably. It does have a unique shape to the property, which, you know, would be a hardship in certain ways, but not for what we're proposing. So the negative criteria, there's no substantial detriment the public could for what we're proposing to do. We're keeping the water from running off onto the joint properties, we're blocking roof runoff and retaining it, improving the street scape from Monroe and crossing North 12th, also providing that EVA accessibility ramp, and we're doing some lighting to that area. So I would say we meet both negative and positive truths in the site.
Would you say it's upgrading the appearance of the industrial area?
Without a doubt, it'll have, definitely, the new building will have a much better presentation, the street scape.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the board comfortable with holding any questions unless you want to ask them now, or we'll wait for Mr. Grimaldi's testimony?
Yeah, I guess the only question I have related to that question is, who's the appropriate person to pose the questions to since some of the stuff that's here is not in the plan was responded to by Mr. Deck?
Right.
And is Mr., since I know him, I can say, Mr. Grimaldi going to address those when he gets up here? Or is there another person who's going to address them? I don't know who, who we are expecting to testify tonight. Is it just the architect?
The architect and the applicant.
Okay, the applicant.
The applicant will comment on hours of operation, employees, things like that.
Okay. Because I, I mean, I have, I have a specific, specific issue with number two of the plan and comments under...
Yes.
Item one, and I, for one, definitely want to see a, you know, a colored rendering of the building before I vote in favor of this.
The applicant's, the applicant's...
Okay, very good.
Okay, so we're going to hold, so maybe you want to bring up your next?
Yes, I'm going to bring up the applicant's report, and that's Robert Grimaldi.
If you could raise your right hand. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony or not to give show you the truth?
Yes, I did.
State your name, spell your last name, please.
Robert Grimaldi, G.R.I.M.A.L.D.I.
Now, Mr. Grimaldi, you've appeared before this board as architect. I'm assuming you're still licensed as such?
All my licenses are still in town.
Okay, it's up to the board. We know Mr. Grimaldi. We know Mr. Grimaldi quite well. He is actually a member of the board at one point, sitting right here. So he knows the procedure. Excuse us.
Yeah. Vice chairman, right off the bat, you know, again, renderings are subject to printers.
Do we have, did we have this?
That is the only thing that you don't have. That is just a rendered, rendered version of the elevations that you do have. So that would be A2?
Yeah, A2 would be rendered elevations.
Do you have a copy from the board? Just the full size. But I also have samples of the actual color of the building. So I put that up there.
If you can mark that A2, unless it's already... Mark that A2.
I have two samples.
Why don't we mark the samples? A3 is a group. Two rocks.
Two rocks. So this is a rendered version of the elevations that you do have in your packet that, that's been submitted, that you guys have to look at. Again, it's a split-faced block building with aluminum storefront windows, and it's an industrial building. You know, initially talking with the client, we actually even talked about the prefab steel buildings and said, no, that's, you know, not what we do here. That's, you know, out in the yard someplace, but not on the corner of the town. So it's an industrial building. It's, it's a garage. You know, even the statement of office, we added office space into the calculation of the use, use of the square footage. There really is no office in there. We know we're going to have a desk in there, someone comes in, punches in, punches out signs, and the truck signs. If we want to designate the bathroom as the office space, there, there's a, there's a bathroom proposed in this space. Getting to the utility questions and to the board's question of the utilities, right now, the pair of existing brick buildings has a set of utilities. The old, the older building that is affront on Monroe has its own set of utilities. The fire company might have to choose that. They are two separate buildings, but they do have two separate sets of utilities. In that little building, it has its own electric, it has a plumbing and everything in that building right now, the one that's...
You're talking about the building that's going to be...
The existing building that's going to be taken down on Monroe. So we don't see any utility issues. The building is basically a garage. This is exactly what the board members have, and I'm referencing PB1. The, again, the building's a garage. We know the property. The client has been at the property since about eighty-seven, has been at the property since about eighty-seven. When it was further on within his tenancy there, as he knew he was staying and with hope that the owner was done with himself, he started doing more and more improvements to the property, rebuilt the existing fence that we see there now today. The one thing that I, I don't mean to differ from what the engineer testified to, but the segment of the easterly side of the building from his property, from the new building to his property line that gets to his neighbor, Latour, we're going to try to probably maintain that fence that's there right now. There is a curb cut opening at it, but the client has said, he hasn't had that operable in years. It's just too difficult. It causes traffic on that, on that side of Monroe. Every once in a while, if there was something that he had to pull out of there, yeah, maybe he'd open it up on Saturday when there's nobody around. But really, all his ingress and egress is off of 12th Street. There's...
Can you go over the facade colors of the building?
So the, from the rendering and from the samples that we handed out, that we handed to everybody, the field will be the white, split face, the accent, the pillars and the wainscoting will be the dark charcoal. Very low maintenance, very easy to keep clean, and again, simple to maintain under voting. Again, all ingress and egress from it is going to be at the, where currently is happening today. I don't think there's, I checked with the client, I don't think there's any outstanding complaints and issues with how his operation is today as far as egress and egress into the property. It was stated that Mr., Kevin, I'm sorry, Kevin referenced that there's the employee parking spots head-on on 12th Street, and they've been there that way for at least forty years that I've paid attention to them. But they've been there forever, and they're, we're not looking to change them. The yard is what we want to bring into, bring inside. Right now, the yard, where, the reason for the garage is his mobile equipment, his, his work trucks, whether they're lifts, whether there's specific equipment for that, he bought for the latest job, they're sitting there. They're aging, they're out in the weather, they're getting worn.
No, they're all vehicles for the business.
They're all vehicles for the business. They're for the running of the construction, they're for individual jobs, but they're what he needs to make a living. And right now, some of the stuff is, he'll have forever, some of the stuff he buys for the job, but he wants it inside. As the town will want it inside, he wants it inside. I mean, we've all seen it driving by. Again, the fence is there now, and probably about four, four years ago, you rebuilt the fence, about four years ago, rebuilt the fence, so it looks, it looks at least clean and presentable then. But it's a fence. The slots are there, but you can still see through the stuff. But we want, he wants to put it in. That, that's the main sense of it. So now, instead of the chain link fence, the old growth, the old building that's, you know, historically, it's kind of cool, but otherwise, you know, that's it.
Can you keep over the lighting, the new lighting?
The lighting on the building will simply be emergency packs. There'll be LED lighting, downlights, they'll not be lighting up the whole world, just basically the safety around the building, and that's it. If there's any question of it, if either Kevin or Christopher want any type of lighting spreads, we'll get it generated. But this is just for low lighting safety. If there's a time limit on stuff, we'll abide by it. I think there is some general lighting within the yard right now, again, just so that when, whether it's the police officers drive by, they can see if anything is going on in the lot. But I know at times when I'm walking the dog by there, you can see, and then, you know, everything is exposed.
Yeah, thank you.
Internally, again, we are a block building. We're not really going to have any HVAC units on the roof or anything to make noise. We're going to have a little air conditioner for the bathroom office. Otherwise, there'll be radiant heat, just to keep the moisture and temperature in the building set so that it serves to keep the equipment in the building functional and safe. But otherwise, to Kevin's points, Kevin? Yes, it does look like it's definitely divisible, but really, it's just the number of garage doors is just for access, for different bays, so that different material can go in and out at different times. This is being built for this company, for this company's use, no other use. He has no plans on subdividing or renting it. It's solely for K and D. In reference to the colors and elevations, those are the materials, and the exhibit A2 is, again, a rendered version of the elevations.
Thank you.
Anything else other?
No.
Just some of the questions that you guys had asked. Generally, the, the work shift is a seventy-three, a seven-two-three work shift, that is true. So are they there assembling a little before that? And depending on where the job is, may they come back to the shop and leave a little later in the afternoon? Yes. Are they an overnight shop? Absolutely not. Yep, they're normal workaday contractors. Typically, anywhere between eight and thirteen, fourteen guys is the crew, is the employees. And again, they've been there since about nineteen eighty-seven, and I'm trying to think of the other questions that you guys may have brought up that were pointed in my direction. I think that was most of them.
Does anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Grimaldi?
Just, just... The fencing on 12th Street that's there now, it's coming down?
Fencing on 12th Street is removed, yes.
So it's now, so it's open to the street?
Yes. Right now, his ingress and egress is not controlled or blocked. If it, if it would be, it would probably be serviced. If it would be, it would probably be serviced, traction for getting things in and out of there. But it's open and it's planned to stay open.
Thank you. Mr. Deere? Yeah, again, I'm not sure if the question is for Mr. Grimaldi or the applicant, but my question would be, I guess you could say it's commendable that we're reducing the max lot coverage from 98 to 92. But my question is, why can't you reduce the size of the building, reduce the amount of impervious coverage on the lot to bring it closer to the 80% that the code allows?
Well, and again, we'll let the client respectfully answer it. But I think the sizing of the building is that the way we determined, the way we walked through to get the sizing of the building was just physically laying out the equipment and the items that are stored outside right now and trying to fit them in the building. This is what's... Will get us into a more compliant situation so that we don't have the outside storage and that we can get everything in there.
So, then I guess the follow-up would be that if you're moving equipment off of an outside storage area into an inside storage area, why do you still need that much impervious coverage? Reduce the coverage where those... That equipment used to be stored, which is now stored inside, and put whatever green or grass, something that would be, again, bring that percentage closer to the 80% that is allowed?
Well, and again, I'll let them testify more specifically to it, but the thing is, it's a construction yard. If we start pulling up all the hard surfaces and, you know, when you have one machine beside, behind another machine. So, you pull the one machine out. If we're coming out and we're off the pavement now, onto a pervious material, now we're causing a rut, sinking into something, while the other ones coming out. Then, you know, you get back into a maintenance situation on the property where it's, okay, we fixed the situation of bringing everything inside, but now we're creating another headache and monster that, you know...
I think that happens after the project.
We go with Mr. Grimaldi for now? Okay, Mr. O'Brien?
So, to clarify, we're not making any change at 11th Street gate?
No. It would be preferred that that... The piece of fence that's there right now, we're gonna build up to it and we're not going... We're gonna not make that an operable gate. Correct? Correct. We're not gonna make an operable gate.
No gate, no entry?
No entry.
Per copy, we removed and engineers reset as well?
Again, that's up when Chris comes off to the site. Little spray painting.
Is there a question for you, Mr. Grimaldi? Are you done, Kevin?
Thank you, sir.
You said that there's gonna be no impact to the utilities. Am I to understand that the building that's being knocked down, that service and those utilities are gonna be what accommodates to the building?
We're gonna have LED lighting. We're going to... So, there's already electric there for... We're gonna be putting in LED. We could probably run the whole building on 30 amps. There's a toilet facility in that building already, so we have sanitation enough to maintain our building. And do we have gas?
Yes.
And we do have... I'm sorry. I wasn't sure about that. FPS in the building. And we're gonna be high efficiency, just bulk garage units. So, I don't see any impact on anything.
Okay, Mr. Deere? Yeah, I just... So, the existing building that's there, is that gonna be attached to this building?
No.
It's gonna stay completely separate?
Yeah, it's gonna be taken away.
Oh, taken away.
The one on Monroe, taken away completely. The two that are fronting to 12th Street remain untouched.
Okay, got it. Thanks. So, you take them all away and they're gonna...
Yes.
Yes.
So, what's the square footage of that first one that's coming down?
1200.
It's on 1200. It's on, it's gonna say it's on.
I read the plan entirely. I'm not asking because I don't know. It's just I don't have it in front of me. I got too much stuff going on. The question now goes to, once you build this building and you bring that equipment inside, and this may be for the applicant, you're not gonna have any overflow outside? You're not doubling the size of your equipment by having a building and now the overflow is still outside?
No. The intent is to bring it all inside. Again, that's how come we came up with the footage, square footage of the building to necessitate what he has now and his future growth that it's going to be able to maintain in this building.
Yeah, you can testify more about that.
Well, there is a statement that you made earlier about it is not going to be subdivided for all the use, but the appearance of the building with all the doors there, lends it to look like a flex building where it could be subdivided and others could come in there. But if this application was to be approved, that would definitely be a condition.
Understood. We also...
No rentals?
No. We also had talked about at one point on the 12th Street elevation of putting a garage door there, because then we could bring anything in straight through and come in and make a right turn. But again, the detriment to that is now not lining up with any existing curb cut. And now, we're in a situation where we could be tying up a corner, which those gentlemen would probably frown upon. So, we was like, "Let's just put in multiple doors and stay away from that."
We can also make that a condition, resolution, that it won't be subdivided.
Okay. Just covering all these bases. Mr. Gudieri?
So, we have a pretty large building here. We're missing one of the setbacks by...
That's of the existing brick buildings.
That's not the new building?
That's not the new building. So, the existing brick building on 12th, closer towards where the old railroad right away.
Oh, you have Mr. Grimaldi? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I know of this for the engineer. No sidewalks on Monroe. No sidewalks are proposed on Monroe or 12th Street.
Full on Monroe?
On Monroe, but nothing on 12th.
Nothing on 12th.
Certainly, there's no sidewalk on either frontage and there are always installing sidewalk on Monroe.
Correct.
12th Street has sidewalk, correct?
No, 12th Street does not have a sidewalk.
On the other side of the street.
And if they're gonna be parked there, it's not gonna be pointing anybody's way. You have to walk through or...
So, there's on the opposite, on the west side of 12th Street, in front of, I guess it's B and B Milmer, there's sidewalk there. There's no sidewalk on our side of 12th Street until after the old railroad.
Correct.
Hence, why we're getting curb cuts and striping to get from our new sidewalk over.
Mr. Ringo, did you have something?
Either for Bob or Ed. To the best of your knowledge, are there any environmental issues with this property? I know it's almost 100% impervious. And my second question is, will there be any maintenance of construction vehicles on the property? Any repairs, anything like that?
Well, number one, in reference to the environmental, I think either the client can speak to that directly. I know of none. I have not been informed of any. And I think the only maintenance of equipment is the same maintenance that is occurring today right now to the same equipment. You know, if a hose breaks or a tire goes, he fixes his own equipment.
And they're gonna ask the applicant?
Yes. It's not like it's... If there are any repairs, I know I can testify to this, if there are any repairs, they will not be to any other equipment except his. He's not opening up a repair shop. And that, again, could be a condition.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Grimaldi before we bring up the applicant?
Mr. Grimaldi, so I have a picture of these. So, the building will look almost just like the building across the street, right? Sort of the same color pattern?
Well, I've noted, since I did the building to the east side of this about 20 years ago, the current... That currently houses Latour Construction. That is a split-faced block building also. The only difference, we have two contrasting colors. Mr. Latour's building is all white.
So, you don't have the contrasting colors?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
So, I'm good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you. The last witness on the call is the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Grimaldi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you raise your hand?
Go ahead.
Could you raise your hand, please? With regard to this application, Deere, for the testimony that you should give, shall be the truth.
Yes.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Dennis Ho, H.O.A.D.G.
H.O.A.D.G. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Grimaldi, could you please describe your background, experience at the site?
Um, I've been there since 86 or 87. I originally rented from the Nevilles and I purchased the building like three years ago from the Nevilles.
Can you describe somewhat the hours of operation of your business?
Yeah, our normal work hours are seven to three. The guys will come in at 6:30, 6 o'clock to get, you know... But most of the time, the guys travel straight to the job. We're a preventive wage contractor. We don't work at our shop. We don't manufacture. We just use it as storage for tools and equipment and material.
And can you describe, as a commercial contractor, what kind of business you think you're in?
Yeah, I'm a licensed general contractor, plumber, automatic stringer, HVAC. The idea of the four suites was to separate the four trades. So, this, that was the master plan. Is it gonna work that way? I don't know. If my guys will be able to figure it out to get this stuff in each trade, in each garage. I mean, that's the idea. I mean, we have a lot of homemaking stuff right now that we can consolidate for carpentry or plumbing or stringer or, you know. That's the idea.
And approximately, how many employees do you...
Right now, we have 12 guys. Might pick up one or two in the summer, but all of our jobs are in schools and municipal buildings, so we don't... We're not at the shop doing any work, so...
And would you say that, how would you describe the delivery? Is limited or...
We... The material goes to the job. We give very limited deliveries to the shop. We want stuff to go to the job. No reason to handle it twice. It doesn't, you know... We don't store stuff, the material, whatever's, you know, leftovers, we bring back.
And with respect to the utilities, the new building is... There's utilities in the 1200 circle building that's gonna be knocked down?
Yeah, I've been in here for 30-plus years. We have a toilet, a hand sink and what do you call it? We have gas and we have electric service.
So, there won't be any increase in services?
No, we're only gonna put one toilet in the new building, just in case somebody's over there. I mean, that's the only reason. That's what we're proposing.
So, it'll stay the same, right?
Yes. No additional load to the store, the water or gas or whatever.
I'm sorry. Sometimes it gets... No. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Ho.
Oh, no, I won't do that.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. So, the one question, and I think I heard what you said, but I have to be sure. So, your material goes directly to the job. It doesn't come to your place of business. But at the end of the job, your excess material, that does come back. Now, does that come back in the form of blacktop, broken concrete, things like that? Or plumbing materials?
Pipe or an extra piece of a brick and some sheet metal. No, then I don't bring concrete and asphalt to the yard.
Okay.
Never. I don't bring dirt to the yard. I mean, we don't...
Okay.
That's all taken care of on the site.
All right.
And for the purpose of the new building, would that be the outdoor vehicles we need put inside?
Yeah, not so much all of the vehicles, but all the storage I got throughout the yard for years and years of storage. I mean, supportive, but in basic.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, we wanted to follow up... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't ask the question. But we wanted to follow up on the repairs. You do your own repairs to your big machinery, hydraulics, oil, things like that?
We don't have anything real big. I mean, the biggest thing we got is a 16-foot rack shop. There are pickup trucks and spreader bands and stuff like that. And we got two small dump trucks. We don't have any large equipment. We have articulated foreflits and stuff like that. But we do change our oil and we do fix our hose and, you know...
And no bodywork?
No, not at all. No, we got enough on our plate. We don't need bodywork. We're doing industry right now.
Just going down my list, Mr. Ho, if you give me a minute? So, I asked the question to Mr. Grimaldi, I guess I'm going to ask it to you as well, that the actual building is gonna house your equipment. Now, if this was approved, we're not going to see overflow on the outside because now your business growth is there. Now, we hypothetically approve this building, now all of a sudden, we have these items outside again. Now, I know there's times that they're gonna be out there. It has to be from coming in, coming out, but we're not going to see what we see now.
No, that's not probably, or that's not gonna happen. I mean, I want it clean and I want it neat. I want to pave it, but if the concern... I mean, I think the pavement's better. That's why we want the storm drainage systems. But if we're... I mean, if we gotta leave some areas stone for impervious coverage, I'm not against that at all. We can meet that criteria. I just thought it would be nicer and cleaner and easier to clean up if it's paved. So, I'm not against, you know, leaving more ground exposed with stone. So, I mean, if that's a sticking point, that's not that... We got no problem with that.
Well, it's maybe not a sticking point for us. We have a problem with stormwater and where does it go? Anyone else? So, I think we're gonna open... Yeah, I was just gonna say, well, in terms of the stone, that brings the max lot coverage, does it not close down, let's say, from the 92? So, that's the other benefit to that, Mr. Ho, is that, again, you're at 92%, which is still pretty significant. And the code allows for 80. So, again, I would leave it up to the professionals to determine if it would be better to have blacktop versus stone. But again, that's... The code does require 80.
Can I read on that? Being in the same type of business, heavier equipment than he has, to the point that Mr. Grimaldi, once you rip up that blacktop and put the stone in there, you have a mess in the lot, outside the lot. If it's already there, not that I'm making any decision here, but if it's already there, it would probably be a cleaner application than if you... Specifically to snow removal.
Yeah. I mean, I hear what you're saying out for snow removal. I was gonna say, because what I heard from the applicant is that he has relatively small equipment, pickup trucks, small dump trucks, things like that, which shouldn't need, you know, or don't have that heavy of a weight to worry about tearing up the stone, so...
It doesn't. I agree.
So, I hear you about the snow climbing part of it.
Over time, that stone becomes impervious. In fact, that's been there at least 40 years. That's impervious now.
But is the intent to blacktop over what's there or just leave what's there? I don't know. I don't know if I understood.
We're gonna clean it nice and pave it nice, so it'll look...
Yes, okay. So, you're putting fresh, new pavement in it?
Oh, yeah. Definitely. Dirt, yeah. Clean up the... Take out the asphalt, that's hair made of the dust.
Okay. Got it. Okay. I think maybe before we have our discussion, someone here for help? Yeah, well, I just want to make one more point. I get to the applicant. So, I heard Mr. Grimaldi's testimony in terms of, "It's just a garage, so aesthetically, you know, it is what it is." But from my perspective, that's not a good response to making a building aesthetically pleasing. You know, it is a... Monroe Avenue is a major thoroughfare within the barrel. And so, anything that new that's constructed there, in my opinion, should look as aesthetically pleasing as possible, regardless of whether it's in a commercial or industrial zone. And if I might add for, to refresh the board's memory, if we think of the granite place on North 14th Street, they came to us with a similar explanation for the facade of their building fronting North 14th Street. of their building fronting North Fourteenth Street, and we had them add architectural details to make it much more attractive. Now, they haven't actually gone forward with the improvements to the building. I'm not quite sure why, but the board did make that a requirement of the approval that some level of architectural detail, more than what I'm seeing here, be added to the facade so that, again, I personally drive down Monroe Avenue every single day of the, of the week, and so I'd like to see a nicer looking building than a garage. So, anyway, that's my point.
I want it to look good. I, I want it to look good. I don't care what color the color is. I am not, I don't think colors, I, colors isn't my thing.
It's not so much the colors, Mr. Hope, it's more of, again, we're just saying windows.
Oh, you're going to put a line, a stripe on and make it detailed?
It generally looks like a garage.
The property is going to isolate me from my neighbors across the street. They're not going to hear anything. I'm going to be separated by the building from all the residents that are across the street from me. So everything that goes on is behind the building. There's no doors in the front, no opening windows. So there's going to be no noise whatsoever coming, so.
Yeah, again, it's not, it's not the noise, I mean, again, I'm.
I'm going to do an accent.
I'm driving down Monroe Avenue, this is what I'm looking at.
No, that's not, you're looking at that.
I'm looking at this. All right, but again, it's, it's just.
Well, I mean, we could put a stripe or two across.
There you go, can we just, can we just, hold on a second, because we're hearing three or four conversations at one time, so, Mr. David, you have the floor.
Yeah, I have actually a, a suggestion or like that would probably work, and that's, that's the type of thing that other developers have done for us over the last few years. They've had some, some type of lineage, you know, to break up the building a little more than the way that it looks now. So let's, someone, someone that saw that said, kind of looks like prison.
So let's call, talk to Mr. Grimaldi a second. If we could figure out, maybe he could implement some type of facade up there to, to, to ball it up a little bit, maybe have a set of freezeboard in between the building with another material of some sort.
Looking at the crystal wall, if this, everything else seems uneven or to the board, would it be open to sitting down with either the board members and/or the professionals to come up with a scheme that is acceptable, or?
So the board members, I don't think would be the ones to tell you how to do this, but I, I think what we were hoping for, and I agree with Mr. David, that we could give it more curb appeal, because just because it's an industrial garage area now, that doesn't mean that we want to go down there and say, well, this is the garage section and down. We want it to look a little bit more appealing. So, um, we have, as we stated before.
If we wanted to testify that, you know, we did have to break it up, either with a continuous canopy or a, a, an E at the first level of the building, you know, the building down, making more pedestrians and deal with some of those details and work them out with the professionals, would that be an acceptable?
Mr. David?
Yeah, I mean, that would be perfect for me.
That could be a benefit.
Unless the.
Maybe. I think what we've already passed is, in the event the board does approve this, one of the conditions would be between now and the time we memorialize the resolution, we look at a sketch.
We can make that happen.
And then, so when we vote on it, we have something in front of us that we can sign off on.
I mean, that's perfect. It's good.
Are you comfortable with that?
We are.
Second, fine, comfortable.
Okay.
And we'd be happy to take a look and advise.
I think the client's pretty loose, loosey-goosey on what, what you do with it.
I want, I want space. I, I don't care for trouble.
But Mr. Grimaldi, you're also a resident.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, it's my business.
So, Mr. Hope, thank you very much. If we have nothing else for them, I think we should.
Yeah, we'll make a motion to open the hearings to the public for comment.
Motion made by Mr. Dondos, seconded by Mr. Scadari, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application, this application? So, Mr., I thought I was going to get away with it.
You don't like how it's on the main, your name?
Oh, yeah, right. It looks like a twos here, right?
All right.
On behalf of, oh, you state your name for the record, Mr. Herbert?
I'm Robert Herbert, uh, fourteen North Hope Street, Pennsylvania, Jersey. I just want to say, I go by this place just as much as everybody else does, because I live at the residential end of the block, okay? When you come off of Monroe, I mean, off of the Bull Guard, on the right side of the Hope Street, all the way up to Washington Avenue, it's got a sidewalk on the left. It's not, once you cross over Washington Avenue, there's a sidewalk on the left, which is heavily used by the local pedestrians and factory workers. Very, very low foot traffic that, down that end of the block unless you're working in Mr. Hope's business or a factory on the other side. All foot traffic is on Monroe Avenue. But I do want to say, if you go by the yard now, it does keep it nice and neat, but there is material stored outside that's yet weathered and, and, you know, some people, maybe some residents along Monroe Avenue think it's unsafe or whatever, and we, that's why you put these all fence up. I think what he's going to do there is going to improve that corner from Hope Street heading towards Fourteenth Street. We have Mr. Lutor, and we have another white building, mixed-use building, and the church, and then the art building on Fourteenth Street. All the last couple of years, they've been making a lot of site improvements. I think that end of Monroe Avenue from twelve to Fourteenth Street, I believe, in my opinion, being a resident on the other end of the block, I think it's going to be very eye appealing, more friendlier, you know, I think it's going to be a positive for the community. Hopefully, in the future, heading west on Monroe Avenue, someone who knows all the buildings, hopefully somebody will take the time and money and the best and look into that, into the community like Mr. Hope is, so. He has a resident that drives by every day and lives on the block. I'm in favor of it. I think it's going to be a huge improvement for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Scadari, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Herbert, did you want to say something?
Sure, um, just, just the conclusion, through the testimony of the architect and the engineer and the applicant, it's just clear that there will be a benefit to an A set improvement to the site, including landscaping, lighting, the Lucie fish pits, the outdoor service inside, and the restaurant stormwater. There's only, as I said before, there's only one variance for maximum block coverage, which the applicant's actually improving on, since it's going from ninety-eight percent to ninety-two point four percent. There is no detriment to the public good, and the one barriers can be raised without, because the benefits clearly outweigh any detriment, and the barriers can be figured out. The parent intends to zone, and the project will be, that we leave the site and agree the parents of the natural site, of the natural site, which is one of the purposes set forth in the master plan. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. Planner, anything for us?
I think Ms. Goldstein has summarized the relief necessary. I seem to need to comment further on this board's questions.
Okay. Chris, satisfied? Any members from the board have anything to say? Okay, so, um, of course, as Mr. Deck knows, this board doesn't really like to see things five minutes before the application is being heard, and the only reason that we would consider this, Mr. Deck, is because you are putting in the basins and that were never there before, but please, in the future, please help this board out that we could see these things well ahead of time. Given the fact that the applicant was very acceptable to Mr. David's request to put in some type of facade and make this place look a hundred times better than what it's looking right now, I, I believe that this is going to be, I believe, not the board, I believe that this would probably be a very, very good addition to what we're looking at now. With that being said, there are some conditions that we talked about, and those conditions were that it would not be used to be either sublet, rented, leased, or anything like that, and I would ask that that be a condition of the application, if it were conditioned to the. Condition to what?
Condition to approval.
Yeah, condition to the approval. Sorry, I couldn't get that all out. I had Herbert syndrome there. But I, I would like to say.
Mr. Chairman, if I might interrupt.
You may.
Because I think you're jumping the gun. Conditions should be considered once we know whether there will be a motion to approve or deny the application.
I thought I said that. I thought I did. I'm, I'm not saying, I said, it was in my opinion.
Okay, but I'm, but I'm just in.
I agree with you, I wholeheartedly.
For a conscientious brother, you could.
Yeah, I don't mean to be run on, but. You could have pointed, I'm being flagged over here now, so. Yes, Mr. Ray, no?
No, I, I.
You didn't raise your hand?
We can discuss conditions as the vice chairman said, when and if.
I just wanted to bring it to the mind of everyone that we didn't forget.
Yes.
So, Mr. Vice, Mr. Ladari, could you?
I'll make a motion to approve this application with conditions.
To be later.
To be later. Determine later.
Okay. To be determined later or now?
Now, I mean, after we approve, whether we get this motion set.
Why don't the esteemed attorney lay out the position?
Is there a second?
Need a second.
Okay, successful motion.
In, in addition to our normal conditions, what I have down are everything that's, all, all the, the equipment and supplies is going to be stored indoors, and it, there won't be an add-on. In other words, all that, all the equipment and supplies now go indoors and it's, there's more equipment and supplies outside. Everything's indoors. Only parking for employees and the construction equipment. The township engineer will make a decision with regard to items that might be in disrepair. I think the applicant said that whatever needs to be done to their sidewalks or curbs, they would, they would do. Drainage calculations, Christian has to look at those and can review those as a condition. There's going to be three-year warranty on irrigation landscaping, but that's, that's normal.
But that's not a condition, it's part of the plan, right?
Right, okay.
I think he said a two-year mark?
We did. Okay, okay.
No, um, no subleasing of the, of the building, division of the building, no rentals to third parties of, of the garage space. The equipment repairs are to be what they have been, and from what I understand, they are not terribly heavy, heavy repairs. Between now, and if the board approves this, between now and the time of memorialization, we will receive from the applicant a more specific rendering of the building with some enhancements to give it more curb appeal, and at the time of memorialization, we will look at that hopefully and be able to basically sign off on it and agree to it. So those would be the conditions, but we do, I think it's important that we see the new architectural upgrades. Okay, that's what I have.
As far as, we, we have a, we have a motion, right?
And a second.
And a second.
We just need a roll call.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Planner.
Yes, you guys are telling me I'm wrong with it? Go ahead.
Should we put in there that there was a change in site plan this evening on Monroe so that the gate and access would be removed?
Well, on the east side, yeah.
Is it on the plans?
I don't know, but Mr. Grimaldi's agrees.
Okay, we can do that, but I. All right.
It's on the plans, but the testimony says I'm going to take it out.
Okay, but I thought the testimony said he could take it out and/or he would use that every once in a while. Am I mistaken?
That's how it was being used every once in a while, but we're, as Kevin asked, we're acceptable of leaving the existing piece of fence that is now a gate and getting, removing the curb.
Okay.
So there will be no ingress or regress on the east strictly side of the building facing Monroe.
That's good, okay.
Just one clarification of your conditions. I'm submitting, I'm submitting to the town, but I'm working it out with the professionals, Zen Nelson, submitted to the board as they see fit, as far as the architectural changes.
Mm-hmm.
Just so I know where I'm standing.
Yes.
Submitted to you on.
Yes.
Yeah, well, Kevin, if Kevin is not here, he's going to have a representative that. You'll handle it?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay, Chris?
It'll be electrified.
Okay. You were, you were going to say something, weren't you?
No, no, I was pointing to him.
This is, this is not an auction. I see this, I ask.
I'm sorry, I do have something.
Okay.
The, the pipe that was, should be connected.
Yeah, the pipe, that's going to be reconnected.
Yes.
I assume, I think there's a question where, where it's going to go, but I have that, I didn't have it as a specific condition, but I will mark that down.
It's the north twelve, so it'll be.
Very good. Okay, with everything that was just said, we already have a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Piscardo?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Dondos?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Ladari?
Yes.
And Mr. Scadari?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations. Thank you very much, and may I add one thing? Ms. Goldstein, congratulations on your first time out of the box. We weren't, we didn't bite, right? We didn't bite.
So the man doesn't get the back for his packet?
Please note that we're still in session. We're going to keep this thing moving because what we have, is there any comments for the good of the board?
Yeah, it's the first time.
Okay, all right, seeing none, we're going to move on. Motion?
Okay, we make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Opened by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Ladari, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing, wishing to speak about anything at all, how you day was? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sam Lee Gozal, sixty-two Locust Drive. That should resonate immediately, right, Locust Drive?
Yes.
A few years ago, I brought a realty boy out of the car and he crossed the street from me and got a subdivision to build two houses on. The, it turned out that the surveys that they used were not correct. When we pointed it out to Jerry and Anthony years ago, Jerry put a stop on their permit and we're nothing back for years.
Are you speaking about Jerry Edgar, the old builder? Not the old, the former?
A couple days ago, we saw many there and felt to one of my neighbors saying that everything's been approved and they're going to start building their two homes. It's not possible that unless he's using the old permit with the old lot plan, that's the only way he could have two approved conforming lots, because he lost five feet on that when they, when they, and they did the resurvey and found, find out that they had five feet less on property. So, five hundred square feet he lost, and he was on the, on the border line anyway. How he's going to start building, that's all I'm concerned about.
Okay.
Because I can see that he may, if he may start and then someday say, well, the board or the township allowed me to build it, what do you know, what do you want me to do now? Take it down, you know, I'm just, I thought we were rushing, I didn't send you a certified letter, I didn't, you know, I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention.
Okay.
I know you mentioned that, I think I overheard you saying you're going to speak on this, right?
I am, but because I see a lot of people here tonight probably going to talk about the same thing, if you don't mind that I would reserve my comments until we hear everybody, because we're probably going to say the same thing over and over again, and maybe I could.
They're here in support and, and I'm speaking for everyone. They're all my neighbors and.
Have me speak if you want to.
I'm sorry?
They're happy to speak.
No, no, for me, I want to give, Eric, my, my only job here is to give everybody a fair share. But we're all talking about the same thing, and no one else would like to come up and speak right now?
Please, please.
I'm sorry?
We trust Stan to speak.
Okay, so Stan is your spokesperson, okay, so then we're going to move on. So, first of all, I did receive a letter from, from you, I guess, no, Joanne.
My wife, yes.
Okay, and I also received another letter from Mr. Mattier, Mattier?
Yes, you got here, it's my neighbor.
So I just wanted to say that for the record, that I did receive these, and as chairman of the planning and zoning board, I can't make a decision or, or comment on it except what I did send back to both of you, and that is, I will talk to my board, I will talk to the vice chair, I'll talk to the, everyone involved, and then get back to you with either an explanation by either me or via the board secretary. So we did have an opportunity to talk earlier, before we got here, and I asked the question, what's going on at sixty-one Locust? And what I was told was that there were two conforming lots, or, okay. There are two conforming lots, and it was subdivided to make two fifty by one hundred lots, and they came before the board, there was, the residents. And they came before the board, there was, the residents were here, I think on two occasions, one time we didn't hear them, hear the application, they went home, and then they came back on another occasion, and I don't know what happened after that, but I can say this. With the testimony that they gave us at that particular time, it showed that there was two conforming lots and they were within their rights to build two single-family homes, not double, two families, not four families.
That's, that's some other daughter talk or whatever.
Okay. So that's all stuff that gets, but the snowball effect, right? It becomes a snowman. But I will tell you that it did come before the board, the board heard everything, and the board did, did approve that application back then that they were allowed to build these two houses on that lot. However, I do see that Mr. Deck is in the audience here and he is the, a good man to maybe bring up and help us along with this, because I see he's waving his hand at me. Mr. Deck, you want to weigh in?
Yes.
This is, this is a little out of the realm of what we're doing, but I'm trying to make you guys, the residents, as comfortable as possible what our job is and why we have to do it this way. Mr. Deck?
Yes. I think there's confusion in the way we initially had shown the fence that connected to the jointed property owner's house. And we had shown it to be further away than what it really was. In other words, our property, there's always been 100 by 100 foot that was subdivided into two 50 lots. That's undisputed, that's there. It's just the way we've shown on one of the plans where the fence location was. We went back, surveyed the entire area just to be sure, and there is that 100 or 50, 250 foot lots, and the property of the jointers, we don't encroach on it or.
So there's no encroachment, they're conforming lots, everything that the board did, all the testimony that was given was conforming at this point. And at that point, and to the date, to today, it's not necessary to notice, because I read something somewhere, nobody knew about this or that, but it's not necessary to notice when they are conforming lots.
They have, they have their approval.
Yes.
I think it dates back to 19?
2019.
2019, yes, even before, yeah.
So.
I'm going to go tomorrow morning.
Get that tape measure, right?
Because I've done it before, and when I go to the fence, the five-foot, you know, like you, you pointed out that it's five-foot in, but it still was 100 feet. There's not 100 feet to the gully. You know, it does work. I'm telling you, there's not 100 feet. I did too, and I was going to go, I guess, tomorrow morning.
If I may, gentlemen, what I don't want to do is get into a match like that there.
Of course.
We have an engineer here that, that tells us that that's what was there, that's what we had to go on, and that's what we ruled on. We, we certainly don't give any favoritism or say that one, one lot is bigger or smaller than the other. In front of us was two conforming lots, and that's what we had to rule on. Okay? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I was going to see, ask Mr. Rego, in a situation where testimony that was provided to the board turned out to be erroneous, whether intentionally or unintentionally.
Good question.
What would, what would this board's recourse be for that? I mean, it's approved, I mean, does someone have to start a lawsuit? I mean, like, again, we, we made our decision based on.
Yeah, we did.
The information, the testimony that was provided at the time, everything was provided to, provided to us was legitimate, and there was 100 feet to be subdivided into two 50-foot lots.
If, if there's. Great question. If there's an application, and any application, and we hear testimony under oath from professionals, we are allowed to rely on that. If it later turns out, and I don't mean years later, if it later turns out that there was a significant mistake or fraud or an error that was more than a couple inches here and there, the board would have a right to rehear the application. Now, that, those are, it's kind of a narrow circumstance, because if it was a broad standard, everybody would come back in, if they were denied, they could come back in and then ask again and again. But if there was fraud, which I don't, obviously I don't see, or a mistake, or someone just blew it, the survey was wrong, we would have a right to rehear it. The problem is, as time passes and something's built, then, then that gets into some legal territory in terms of the stop, only maybe prevented from doing anything further, or we could ask the applicant to come back and say, okay, somebody blew it the first time around, wouldn't we want to rehear it again? But the thing is built.
No, no, but in this situation, nothing's been built. So, again, hypothetical, there is only 95 feet frontage, and so we, we do not have two conforming lots.
Yep.
Would that be a situation where we could potentially have a new hearing?
I think it, it, it might be, but what I would suggest, I mean, if nothing's being built, or has been built, I think what should happen first, and this is me, I think these two gentlemen should pick a time and meet at the site. And, and bring their rulers, and bring their tape measures, and come to a meeting of the minds. Somebody's in error. Maybe someone's measuring to the, to the curb, to the middle of the street, to the right of way. I think they should come to an agreement. If they agree, if there was, if you agreed that there are two conforming lots, we're done. If, if Ed says, you know, we're five feet sure, then on that circumstance, if nothing's built and there hasn't been a lot of reliance on our decision, we could, we could rehear it again. Because somebody, somebody made a mistake. No, you can't do it that way, otherwise it gets, we just got to, we just got to do it in formality. Awkward, but at times it happens. Let's just do this the right way, because I knew this would open up dialogue. We're going to start out with the planner, and then I'm going to say something and then we'll ask questions. Yes?
Thank you, Chairman. I thought that the board and our attorney should, should be aware that our ordinance under preliminary site plan, which is 120-15.6 of the land use ordinance, that preliminary approval is good for three years. An applicant can ask for two one-year extensions. However, changes to the final site, or I could say approval to the final site plan. So the.
Well, not the other site plan, these are single-family houses.
I apologize.
I mean, so there's no site. It's just a variance.
Right.
You're certainly right on the, on the timing of, of, of the life of the approval. But here, first, I think they should get together and measure. So. I have a question you there, too. And, and I know you're the attorney, and I'm just the chairman of the board with, with a real good tin, but. I have, I have, I have to say, I have to say, we have to be careful what kind of water we're treading here. The applicant, who was Mr. Paparato, came before us with his professionals and said, this is what we have, okay? I know the residents are not going to like what I have to say, but I have to say this. If Mr. Paparato walked out of here, out of here with an approval, then Mr. Paparato need to be, needs to be informed. Mr. Deck, as the civil engineer, can't go there and say, I'm going to remeasure Mr. Paparato's property, because I tell you, if that was me, I would be just as aggravated at the people that are saying you're five feet too long or too short, which is somewhat hearsay, not fact, right? So you have to play that by the cards, Mr. Rego.
As I said.
Would you agree?
We heard, yes, we heard testimony under oath. My issue, though, is there have been applications, not, not in front of this board, or just in front of this board, all over the place, where maybe someone makes a mistake.
Yes, but I don't think that's all, Mr. Deck.
No, well, well, we hear testimony and we, and we, we rely on that. We have to rely on what we hear under oath, and we, we ran it through. If it later turns out, and, and there's no reliance on that, in other words, the applicant, if the applicant went out the next day and started building, the applicant would be pretty much home free, even though someone made a mistake. But if there's no reliance yet, if there's not a lot of, if there's a construction, we need to see, maybe it is five feet short. I have no idea. I mean, but I think we need to know that.
Mr. Ladari?
I mean, the building, the building, the floor borough official, right, put a halt to work order, right? So should there be some, potentially, the seller should testify, right, to stop the?
Yeah, Jerry said, he took, he took the permit off the table, he said.
So there has to be some data, there has to be some documentation on why he did that.
I, I need to, I just need, I know everybody wants to jump in, but I need to control this meeting or it's going to get out of hand. When Jerry Yeager was the building official, he may have taken it off the table, he may have done that, but after Jerry left, this application was heard again, right? Jerry wasn't here at that time?
Sure.
Okay, I don't think he was here, and even if he was, at that point, when this came before us, with all respect, I know you've got a lot of paper in your hand back there, why wasn't that presented from the public at that point? Maybe the decision would have been made differently with that information. We're seeing and hearing the information now.
We have that paper, we're right here.
Okay, so I'm going to ask this. Mr. Planner, you're going to say something, then I'm going to ask someone else from the public who's holding that paperwork to come up, and maybe we could get this going.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman, my apologies for before, I was not holding my courage. A minor subdivision has to be filed with a county within 190 days of approval. Mr. Deck, do you know if a minor subdivision was filed with county?
I don't know, I think that was someone, the attorney.
Well, if not, I, you have to talk to the applicant, if not, then they would have to come here for an extension, which is common, a lot of people don't file within that timeframe, they don't know about it. The clerk in the county won't accept it, and they should accept it if it's beyond 190 days.
Did you write the descriptions to the applicant?
Oh, yeah.
They would need to, to come back to us if they haven't recorded it to ask for an extension time.
Well, I did, I did write the missing descriptions to the laws.
Okay.
And again, just real quick, the deed, the original deed was filed in the courthouse as a 100 by 100 foot lot. So the question is not whether it's 95 feet wide or 100 feet wide, the question I think is where that 100?
I, I agree, okay. So can I ask if you guys, we're kind of exhausting this, but I know you're biting at the bit to get up here, come on. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Rene Hozamanet, 53 Locust Drive, Kellaw. Thank you for recognizing me.
Thank you for coming up, Rene.
Facts only, because we love the facts. In the planning board meeting of June 13th, 2019, Mr. Paparato and his attorneys came forward and found that they only had 97 by 50 at the time. And they said, and I quote, "We read the, the temperature of the room with the residents here and knew we were not going to get variance, so we halted everything with 97 by 50," which is what they thought they had.
Okay.
Okay?
That was June 19th?
2019.
Okay.
Subsequently, and it says in these same minutes, they bought three feet into the Cranford Gulch from Borough Township, which I spoke to the, directly to the attorney. I said, well, that sort of circumvented the variance, but he assured me that was perfectly legal. So now they think they have 100 by 50. They came out to start again.
Can it, can you, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You said they bought three feet to the, to.
Cranford Gulch.
Okay.
Already took down a tree. In Kellaw, yes, in Kellaw, but from this town, the borough, sold it to them. Okay, so now they have conformity, correct?
So if they bought it from the town, that would have been at the council level? Okay, no, nothing to do with this board?
Okay.
Correct?
Says they sold it to them, right, so they, they sold it to them, they granted the grading permit, let's see, we've been getting.
Was that after this board acted or before? It had to be before.
This is saying in the meeting, planning board meeting, June 13th, 2019, then the client went back to the proverbial literal drawing board and purchased from the borough a sliver of property on the left side of his parcel to fill the left rectangle to make them both conforming lots. Okay. So now he believes he has a conforming lot, because he got, he had 97, now he has 100 by 50.
May, may, may. I'm going to interrupt for a minute. Whenever applicant, applicants come in with a lot deficiency, you know, their front, backsides, one of the questions the board normally asks is, have you tried acquiring extra property from your neighbors, or have you tried selling your lot? If you buy extra property, you minimize the deficiency and that's looked upon as, as a good thing. Now, I don't know, I don't really know anything about this action. If he has an extra three feet and it's legitimately two 50-foot lots.
Right, that's where I'm getting at. So now he thinks he's made 97 to 100, and he always thought he had the 50. Our neighbor Veronica is next door to the house, to 61. She is.
Hi, Veronica.
Directly against him. She received a letter, April 2, April 13th, 2000, today's date, 2021, from the attorneys of Mr. Paparato, saying that.
Was that Mr. Frazier? Mr. Frazier? Yes.
Yes. Mr. Frazier, is he here?
No.
Because I talked to him, I had COVID that day, and I went out in my pajamas and talked to them, so, I was back with COVID, right? They sent a letter to the client, Ms. Veronica Klein, telling her that her fence, she may not be aware, is five, four to five feet over onto his property, and they are going to remove it for her if she does not remove it in seven days, which, to your point, alerted the whole neighborhood again, and she produced her survey, which says it is not, it is exactly, her survey is 55 by 100, now leaving Mr. Paparato and Mr. Frazier 45 by 100. So.
Let's go.
Three surveys were done. Three, in addition to, and thank you, Mr. Deck, I appreciate you staying. Three surveys were done, we repeatedly asked for the survey results, and were never given them. We actually came, did a POA to, that came, got his plans, we'll speak about two families later, he obviously is making them two, two families.
He absolutely is not.
I know, he can't, well, they're mother daughters, but you can see, there's a kitchen, there's this kitchen sink in the middle of the living room.
Whatever, whatever, whatever you're telling me on that part, he's absolutely not. He would have to come before this board to do that.
Okay. Okay, legally?
Yeah, legally, yes.
Yes.
But everything that we're doing is legally, if somebody goes out there.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that. So, this letter to us from Mr. Frazier after. Sorry? Dated, um.
July 19.
Thank you. 1921.
21, 2000.
2021, 1921, boy, I'm dating myself. Okay, 2021, said, after Veronica was crying for two weeks, that's why we all got together, Mr. Klein, I am advised by the surveyor that the fence is apparently on your property. It would seem that your survey is correct. Period. Just one note, when I went out and said that our, our surveys, we handed him all our surveys, they were all correct. Mr. Frazier actually said to me, well, then the entire block needs to be resurveyed since 1940, and everyone will have to move their property five feet. So this was the final result showing us that he admitted your fence is on your property. Therefore, her fence, she, her property is 55 by 100, leaving him 45 by 100.
What happened to the three feet he allegedly bought from?
He bought the three feet, so.
He bought the three, but he still showed, based on that.
The length, we're talking length and width.
Yeah.
Length, he got the 97 to 100, but he never realized the 40, the 50 was 45.
So before we, do you have anything else for me? Can I just ask you, what do you do?
I'm a human resources professional. And I'm shaking, though, but.
Don't be shaking, because I'm looking to hire you in my company.
Appreciate it.
You're good.
I'm available, actually, Sharon Cloud, 17 years, Rain Town, Celene, Bristol Myers, so, yes.
All right, we'll, we'll talk.
Picture of the surveyor.
Okay.
I don't know if that's one of your, your guys.
Oh, my God. Thank you very much, but I'm going to ask, is anybody else going to come up and speak? Because you're waving your hand at me.
I do, I do have a husband.
Oh. No wonder why you're sitting. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Mr. Grimaldi looking to speak. As a resident.
As a resident.
Okay, Mr. Resident.
39th Road, 11th Street. Maybe we could suggest that the site gets, as the corners get in, then you can see where it actually is. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gramali, but I'm going in a different direction.
May I have a second, one more thing?
Yes, you can.
I apologize.
No, I don't apologize. I like the way you speak.
I just wanted to add, my husband did remind me, we were concerned with the continuity from Mr. Egger retiring and, you know, what happened to the paperwork. So when we asked yesterday, Mr. Mater had emailed Wanda, I believe it was, she said, "Since the 2014 approval, they see no letters, no, no obstructions, no objections, nothing." So you have the approval. And Mr. Egger actually went like this and showed me Mr. Paparata's permit and said, "He has $14,000 worth of permits right here. If they're on a full survey, we're stopping this right now."
Okay.
Just to give you an idea. So it was, no, I don't know what happened to all our, all these letters.
Okay.
Because they said that Wanda said that the last thing they had is the 2014, 18, and he's going on that approval.
Wanda Gramali's here, right? Wanda? That is correct?
That is correct.
Okay, okay.
There is a file, but it's full of drawings and all permit information.
Okay.
I cannot find the file relative to plan.
Okay, so, thank you. So let me tell you about even asking the attorney or the board. I could just tell you from hearing this and making common sense out of it, you seem to have a great case, but this board can't do anything to help you. The only thing that I think we can do is advise you to maybe get an attorney, first and foremost, get collectively together, because I know for a fact, and Mr. Regal, if I'm wrong, I can't say, well, we can't vote on saying, "Oh, we're going to go out and instruct Mr. Deck, who is here a part of the public tonight, not as a professional, go and re-measure Mr. Paparata's property." We would be so wrong in doing that, that we would probably be up on charges next. But I would recommend getting an attorney to do the survey, or to at least send a letter and saying, "This is what we're doing." Now, if Mr. Paparata decides to go over there with his backup tomorrow...
Do I have to lay down a permit?
You know, I can't speak to that, but...
But the board approved it, so no responsibility for approving it?
No, we can only, for the board, we can only approve or disapprove of the evidence that is in front of us.
Right.
If they show us a, 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 a survey that says, "This is 150 by 100, and this and that, and it's all good," they run the oath. They're, they're under oath. So I'm going to err on the side, if anything happened, it wasn't disingenuous, it was a mistake. I have to, I know Mr. Deck and his firm for quite some time, and I would say, "It could be a mistake. Maybe it is, maybe you're wrong." That's why we can't rule.
If it's a mistake, there's very little, if it's an honest mistake, there's very little we can do about it. Nothing. It only comes into play if the mistake was, you know, an absolute fraud, or someone was pulling the wool over someone's eyes, then that's different. But if it's an honest mistake, which people make, then we, we, again, relied on what was presented to us, and...
What about the missing documentation?
Who's responsible for that? What a good question.
The missing documentation, we can't answer that either, because again, we're the board. But I will tell you, there's been three transitions, four transitions, since Wanda got her position. And the offices have been changed. They used to be in another direction. Now, I'm not saying that files have been mysteriously thrown away, or there was some kind of clandestine meetings to say, "Let's get Paparata's file and throw it out." I'm not saying that at all.
But only our documents, everything else survived, you know?
Could borderline be strange? Possibly. But I, I, all I could say is, I think, I think you need to hire an attorney.
Yeah, I think that's your best. Get together, get some legal advice, and see, see where it takes you. Someone who knows land use.
If I hear you, ma'am, I'm sorry, I just can't go to the audience, I have to call you up, and if you want to be heard...
We did try a few attorneys who...
Seven.
Yeah, and they're all, you know...
They all represent contractors, and they don't want to lose their clients. So they keep saying, "Well, try this guy." And he says, "Well, I'm going to retire now, I want to do it." They're going to try this guy. Do you, do you have, you guys want to take on?
Recommend some managers.
Okay, so there's, there's a good, here's what we're going to do. I'm going to, I'm going to ask, do you have anything else to say? Because I'm going to close the public portion, and then we're going to tell you what I'm going to recommend, because that was a great idea.
Okay, I wanted to just say one more thing, which, you know...
Can you come on up, so we can hear you on the microphone? And you're being recorded, by the way.
Yes, that's fine. Maybe I'll even watch it. How did, so, so this is, we're facing this, it's already happened. We're sorry, there's no recourse, you have to hire an attorney. How do we, as townspeople, come to present something before it happens, to prevent it, so that we're not in this position? Like, if he starts his bat, he said he's starting, you know, and, and also with, with the other, you know, with the other, the situation about possibly mother-daughter families. How do we get ahead of that? Because next time, it'll be, they're built, oh, they're built, they're separate, you know, separate electric, we see separate plumbing, but it's too late.
So here's what happens. The applicant hires an attorney, a planner, and an engineer. Also, sometimes can bring in friends, witnesses, that says that this is going to be the greatest thing on the design. These professionals are going to present this to us, and they're going to tell us all the things why or why not, whatever the case may be. When the opportunity is to open it to the public, this board, or any board, doesn't make any decision until we hear from you, the public, because you may have some information that is going to, like you have tonight, that may sway us, or say, "We better not rule on this tonight, let's look at this further." And that's the recourse that you have when an applicant is, is doing that. Now, as far as mother-daughters, what you hear on the street, we, we don't hear any of that. We don't hear not one ounce of it. When it's presented to us, that's when we hear it. If we see something that's not kosher, we rule on that and only that.
So he would have had to present the plan?
He would have had to present the plan.
And I have the plan.
We approved two single-family houses. I don't even know what a mother-daughter, I've heard it for 50, I don't know what it is.
Right.
Really.
It's a...
Some towns, I know, some towns have legal definitions, it's, it's two-family.
Two living quarters within one roof.
Yes.
With...
Subleties.
And you can see by his plans, that's what they're...
We didn't hear that.
That's four families on a, yes, I did. There's four families going into a dead-end street with five houses on it. So that's potentially four new families.
This floor, those, Mr. Chairman, two, two kitchens and one lounge.
No.
Right, so he does not have a kitchen there, but he has a kitchen sink in the middle of the living room.
Okay.
And all the plumbing.
What do you mean, a kitchen sink in the middle of the apartment?
So you'll see, the top floor has five bedrooms, a kitchen, living room. The bottom floor has five bedrooms, a living room.
Can we have, excuse me, ma'am, I'm sorry. We need to have one conversation, because we're not going to get this on here, and it seems like this is going to be an Oprah request, real quick. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, so, yes, Oprah request. So you can see...
He said he didn't know those plans. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. The top floor is like five bedrooms, a kitchen, living room, dining room. The bottom floor is five bedrooms, a dining room, a giant living room with kitchen connections in it, which could easily just put a kitchen in there, and then you have two fam, you know, you have two families.
Okay, so a recommendation here that was made was that if you, first of all, I would say, you need to hire an attorney. But if you say all the attorneys are not responding to your request, then the next course of action is get yourself on the agenda through mayor and council. You're going to have to bring it to that higher authority, because if, we can't rule on anything here, we have already made our ruling, but that's one avenue to go to, and then the borough attorney at that point may advise you what to do. But what do you have?
But they need to reach, reach the building. I don't think we approved that. We did not approve that.
Any term of mother and daughter, we did not approve. He approved, single-family house.
And, and can I ask when his permits were approved?
Because you just gave us this letter, I don't have that information. You actually have more information than I have.
There's no minutes on, you know, that we can look up, when, when he came again and didn't say that we were even against this, you know, when, when it was approved, like you're saying, "Well, we've already approved it."
Well, Kathy, you could go back at when this was done, and you could file an Oprah request of that meeting.
I mean, the official, when we heard the case, again, it's a few years back, I don't remember all the details, but I will tell you that when we do a subdivision, what, you know, and especially in a single-family home, I mean, you know, a, a single-family district, we always ask for renderings of the homes that are going to be built. And I'm pretty damn sure that we asked for that. And I can't say that we're provided with floor plans of what's going to be inside those homes, but it is very important to the board that we do not get two cookie-cutter houses that look identi, identical next to each other. So again, I'm confident that we asked, because I remember probably speaking to Mr. Paparata saying, you know, like, "We don't want your stand," like, you know...
Right, we look at it as...
Well, we did that, unless Mr. Frazier's dismayed.
Right, and so that should all be in a file, I mean, at least the renderings of the homes that, that they were supposedly going to build when they got around to building.
Yes, Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, Ms., I'm sorry.
Hozamnetz.
Mrs. Hozamnetz has provided a copy of the floor plan, it's not signed, it's not sealed, there's no legend, but the floor plan does show, top right in the family room, a wet bar with a sink. Or they want to consider that a kitchen, I'll check our definition, if it's even in there, but typically would entail a sweep of line.
Okay, I'm sure it's under the definition.
That's good.
It's below the definition.
Why you can't build that?
So, Mr. David, that you said, you didn't, you know, you asked for the, not the inside, but the, the look of it, but not, again, the original issue of, "Do you have enough land to subdivide?"
No, again, we've, we've already stated that. What was presented to this board showed surveys of a 100 by 100 piece of land. So that means a simple subdivision, where we now have two conforming 50 by 100-foot lots. That's the approval that we gave. And then again, we always have an interest in the, the look from the curb of what the house will look like, because, right, because our, our master plan, someone says, "We don't want to see," you know, if you think to what they call Blue Ridge, or the Spaghetti Streets, or whatever, depending on how long you've been in Kellaw, you know, every house was the same when it was first built, you know, the small kick cut, you know, we don't want that going forward. So we, we focus on making sure that, that whether it be two, three, four, however many homes are going to be built side by side, that they look differently. But we're not, we're not obligated to look at the interior of the home, you know, that's just the...
That's after it's built, and it's...
Well, yeah, it's, it's not within this board's jurisdiction.
Yeah, I understand, but not, it's not, right, but not if it's turned out, but...
If we're not, as, as, right, as the planner's saying, if we're non-conforming, then we have the ability to probe much deeper into exactly what they're putting inside, outside, you know, you name it, so.
So, Mr. David, you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You may also wish to know that Section 120-1.4 defines a dwelling unit as having one kitchen per dwelling. This is the zoning ordinance, it's pending, I'm sure the building code has more language, sorry, kitchen, you know, anything? Hey, do you know anything about building code? Mr. Gramali, sir. Do you know anything more about building code in terms of definitions of kitchens?
What, I'm sorry, I... No, look, I, I want to get this, this is, this is more interesting than...
What's a fine, has a kitchen?
Is that such a definition, is a kitchen under, you gotta be saying?
Lot size is secondary to this.
I would say that they have a, a statement that if you have X, Y, and Z, this is a kitchen, but you have a determination in your kitchen area that those things, you're saying they're out of the, would appear. I, I don't believe in the ID state, the UCC state, that there is a limit to the kitchens to be declared as a single-family, so also I think that's more from a planning zoning, not from...
We will, we'll...
Yeah, yeah, no, not, but from UCC, I don't think that, that comes into play, I think it comes into play from your, your side of the page, not my side of the page.
Maybe we should start seeing floor plans.
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest right now. We should start seeing floor plans for these things.
Yeah, I have more, I was feeling a copy.
Do you, do you want your documentation? What, what, what we're going to do is, you know, it's not like we don't learn something new every day, right? And maybe you just taught this board a little something, because what I'm thinking, and with Mr. Regal just voiced, and where Mr. David was going, is that maybe we should take a look at the interior, because in the past, it was always said, "What you present to the board, and we sign off on it, that's what you can build." And if somebody says later on, "Oh, oh, I forgot to put this in here," you can't do it anymore. But if it's in there, you could do it. And for us not to look at the interior of these dwellings, I think we're making a, a big mistake.
What about separate utilities and separate, does that distinguish any definition?
Well, listen, in the old days, in the old days, guys were building houses, and they would put the plumbing and the utilities and what have you behind the wall, and then when the building inspector left, they would go and do what they want to do. I'm not alluding to that's what Mr. Paparata did, and I would never say that. But I know that procedure, I know that technique. However, I do believe that you need to hire an attorney. I do believe that you need to go to council immediately, and you have a lot of things there. I do believe we should try to find the date when this was heard. And I also believe that maybe you should file for an Oprah request for the meeting minutes and what, what happened on that night. And I think that's the best we could serve you, and I really appreciate you bringing this up, because we, as a board, don't want to approve anything that's not kosher. We don't care who it is.
One last question, if we cannot get an attorney, what if we hired a surveyor, our own, you know, like, separate, and then they show that the lot's different, because as you said, Mr. Deck's here as a citizen.
It almost sounds like, what I'm hearing, the lot size seems to have slid to the second, that's a secondary issue. If he's building two, if he's building a Ted, what, Ted bedroom house?
Two, two, two.
That's a little beyond the pale. We didn't, we never approved anything.
Two Ted, Ted.
Two Ted boot, Ted bedroom rooms.
Or not yet, five bedroom, on the top, yeah, whatever, two of them.
That, to me, seems to be the burning issue, which maybe, maybe the construction department and the zoning officers should not, they shouldn't approve plans like that, because we didn't, I don't think, I'm speaking for me, I don't think we approved that.
No, yeah, we didn't approve any, anything related to the interior of the, the homes that, you know, he claimed he was going to build.
Yeah, they're a single-family house.
And so it is not sec, we believe that the, the lot size is primary, because there's, you know, you're, you're doing with no variance without the approval of the residents, if, if in fact it is 45 by 100, which they, he was very disappointed to find, Ron, because survey was correct. Very disappointed, and everything halted. I think time goes by, you know, and just...
Time goes by, it's going to happen, so you need to do it, you need to do it sooner than later.
Yep.
You win that hand over there.
I just want to...
You can't speak unless you...
You can't speak unless you come up.
I didn't want to, because I'm long-winded.
Listen, if you're long-winded, I'm going to cut you off, because I'm the only long-winded person around.
First of all, I...
State your name and address.
Joango South 62 Locust.
Okay, now, go ahead.
My question is, I have two questions. One question is, how do we get on the agenda for the mayor and council?
Okay.
And the second question is, where can I find the written minutes for, for the council meetings and planning board? I see some. All I see is the video, and I do love you guys, but it's not on CCTV, and it's like a chipper, everything. I'll see it. I watched the respeak, and it's...
Strong and tense.
So, Mr. Chairman, there's, there's no, there's no requirement to be put on the agenda, and I don't, I don't know if they would. You can just go up to the public meeting, and just as you're doing tonight, you go to the council meeting, and when they say the meeting is now open to the public, you come up. The only other, and one last thing I wanted to add, is the chairman mentioned about an Oprah request for the minute. The only other, and one last thing I wanted to add, is the, the chairman mentioned about an Oprah request for the minutes. I would say an Oprah request for the application documents, right? So, the minutes are just going to be a recording of what was discussed. But the application should have the surveys, everything that...
I think we have all that.
Oh, you have it, okay.
Because we've been on this for...
Does the application say two single, single-family houses?
I believe so, we have it all, I, we didn't bring the entire banker's box with us.
But haven't you, you, you don't have the submitted application documents, you have what you think you have, in other words...
We have only what we were able to get from the, the building inspection.
The Oprah request, yeah.
Oh, you already...
We've done mine.
Oh, okay, so you have... But I do stand corrected, Mr. David is correct, you know, you don't have to get on an agenda, you go there, then, in the public portion. I would also, um, yeah, I would, I would recommend that you do that.
Believe they're the first and third Wednesdays of the month.
I'm sorry?
Believe they're the first and third Wednes, Wednesdays of the month.
Okay.
All right, thank you for hearing us.
Yes, Mr. Deck.
Going over this, it's hard to come back, but what we had was a ninety-seven wide foot, ninety-seven foot wide lot.
Right.
The adjoining lot was always fifty-five feet. We received from the township, that sliver of land that was eight feet wide, on, just went up to zero on the adjoining lot. So, we actually have more than a hundred feet in the frontage, and actually, in the back, it's a little bit more than, we got ninety-seven.
So, you're saying you got the land on the width side, so you have more than one hundred wide?
That's correct.
And the depth was never an issue?
No.
Okay.
And the adjoining lot was always fifty-five.
Oh, okay, so, that sheds different light. So, if the adjoining lot was fifty-five, we're assuming it was fifty. So, that was, and that's where they're coming up with the forty-five. But it's not forty-five, or it's forty-five and fifty-five is one hundred, right?
Yeah, I think we're, we're getting too deep into it.
Well, you know, no, you know what it is, Greg? Mr. David, I'm sorry, if, if you have one lot that's already conforming, because it's fifty-five, let's just say, but the balance of that lot is forty-five, when they want to subdivide, they pick up that five feet on the...
Well, no, Mr. Kim, that existing fifty-five foot wide lot was the neighbor's.
Ah, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
We always knew it was fifty-five, not fifty.
Right, okay.
We never thought it was...
Yes.
The board may recall a long discussion about this sliver.
Yes.
Along the drainage, and the applicant tried to have the Columbus, Columbus Street frontage given to the neighbor, or sold to the neighbor, and they didn't want it.
They wanted it.
Right, they didn't want it, so that whole thing reverted to the athlete.
Okay.
I just want to end on a good note.
Okay.
Before that lot, there was a, a house, woman worked at Sherrin Cloud for thirty years, and during Hurricane Sandy, a tree fell on her house, and my husband went in and rescued her, right before the tree crushed her, her city.
Great job, I mean, good job, all right.
So, and they, we're not opposed to one family house, I mean, one house, if you want them. We're opposed to two half-homes on a small...
Okay, anything else from you guys?
No.
Okay, let's...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
To close the...
Oh, sorry, yes.
Okay, well, go ahead, Mr. Gramali.
You just mentioned something, and I just want to say real quick, you need to think about it, about the interior of houses. You start demanding, requesting to see all the interiors of all the houses, you're putting a burden on the homeowners that come in, because a lot of times when we do the sliver and everything for planning board, we don't have that whole interior of the house worked out yet. They're not putting up all the money to do the full design of the house. So, then, if you're going to hold them to what's presented, you, you have to be careful with what you hold for that. And it's maybe general compliance with the drawing or something, but if you demand and say, "This is what you, but I mean, this is the thing you built," you're demanding then the homeowner to fully execute a set of construction documents, basically, before the planning, before they even know that they have a right to build the house.
So, so, I only, the only thing I'm going to disagree with you, Robert, and, um, you know, I, I respect your title. Um, if it is a conforming lot, if it is a conforming lot, there's no reason why you can't show a full set of plans, because you're going to build that house. If you have, if you're, yeah, variance, totally different, right? But if you have a conforming lot, you should be prepared, right?
But if you're coming for a variance, and you don't know, you may not hold the trigger.
But if someone comes in front of us, "They want to build a single-family house," if we don't have the floor plans, at a minimum, we could say, "They should tell us it's three bedroom, four bedroom."
Oh, yeah, no, and, and...
And lock it into that.
You're perfect of generality.
Twenty bedrooms.
You're performance with what you show. You don't show a three-family house and then come back and build a seven?
No, but if you're showing a single-family house, and you're showing roof lines with gables and offsets, that's all automatically telling me you know where the rooms are, because you're not, you're going to position them in such a fashion that complements your, your, your windows and things like that, so, I'm, I'm moving strongly... Yeah, yeah, I'm moving strongly towards seeing it, because this eliminates plugging, it's like six in the middle of the...
As an architect, I prefer that.
I'm for you, but...
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mr. Ladani, second by Mr. David, all in favor?
All right, motion to adjourn.
Okay. Made by Mr. David, second by Mr. Palmetti, all in favor?
All right, thank you.
Guys, thank you for coming in.